Good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson is here. I'm expecting him to join us momentarily. Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings, your love, grace, and mercy most of all. Just pray for your guidance, your direction, Father, that you anoint this meeting and everyone here, Father. May we know your will, never resist you at any time, and seek you in all the decisions that are made. We give you praise and glory and thanks for all that you have done and promised to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the regular and special city council meetings held on July 11th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of July 7th through 13th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Don't have any this week. Item 8 is unfinished business. 8A is an ordinance, excuse me, amending fiscal year 2023 budget to reflect receipt of Etowah County Community Development Committee grants. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Funds will be used to purchase new mattresses for city fire stations and the amount is $2,000 each from districts 28, 29, and 30. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget to reflect receipt of fiscal year 2023 assistance to firefighters grant. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. This is for purchase of 40 2018 edition self-contained breathing apparatus packs and the amount is $337,090.90 with the city's 10% match being $33,709.10. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Just like to offer thanks again to Chief Reed for taking it on your own to obtain this $337,000 grant and also want to thank Representatives Butler and Liptak, I couldn't remember, I'm sorry Craig, and Gilli for the $2,000 grants that we've received for our fire department. I know the mattresses are worn out and these will be very helpful, so thanks to those folks. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8C is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 741 Forest Avenue in District 3. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Highlands Bound LLC has offered to pay $100,000 for the property. This is the former Sears Building and also housed DHR for a time. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this is a development that we've been working with, with some local people here in town. This will develop more residential on Broad Street for a building that's been vacant as long as I can remember. So this will be a great mixed-use development downtown on Broad Street overlooking the whole area, so we're hoping to have 20 apartments built in that area. And so we're very thankful for these developers and we're looking forward to something looking really nice.
That will be good. Just great work. Thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 9 is a resolution awarding bid number 3500 for janitorial services for cabin rentals at Nakalula Falls Park Campground. The purchasing department has recommended the bid be awarded to Alabama Rent-A-Maid and Janitorial Services. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Some move.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution appointing members to Humane Society Pet Rescue and Adoption Center. This appoints JT Harrell and John Moore for terms expiring at the end of 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm going to abstain from this. I've got a conflict.
Okay, we have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing submission of Alabama Power Shoreline Permit. This is for the construction and operation of a new fueling station at Coussa Landing and the amount is $100 per year. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So this is something again, Mr. President, that the mayor's office is trying to work on where you can fuel boats from the Coussa River by the landing and also you'll be able to fuel them by land. So it'll be dual-purpose. It'll be a credit card machine, so no employee will be needed to be added at this facility. It'll also generate revenue for parts and wreck and it's something that's been needed on the Coussa River for quite some time.
I think that's going to be a great service. We have not had that there ever, so it's nice to have it in the City of Gadsden.
Thank you.
Thanks again. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing submission of Alabama Power Shoreline Permit. This is for the construction and operation of a new irrigation withdrawal intake structure for irrigation at the Gadsden Sports Park. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this is something that when we visited the Gadsden State Parks Complex, we were spending in the summer $10,000 a month for our water bill. We don't own our water department. It's a separate entity, so it comes out of our budget to the water department. This will allow us to water our fields with a pipe coming from the Coussa River. We have to get a FERC permit. We're still in Engineering Department and still in the process of going back and forth with them. They're going to allow it, it's just we've got to dot our i's and cross our t's and this could save us upwards of an amount of $120,000 a year for parts and wreck.
Thank you for that work, too. That's a big savings. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Waggoner Engineering. This is for engineering design permitting and construction documents for Lakewood Drive street improvements from Highway 411 to the intersection of Alpine View and Sunnydale Avenue and the amount is $220,085. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this is an area where the sun sets in their own place and rises in their own place. There's a lot of people in that neighborhood that almost get hit and have been hit and it's a very dangerous avenue that a lot of people walk and this will be a safety issue and also a 911 issue, so this is something we've been looking forward to for some time.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is new business. I believe we have some items.
Yes, Mr. President, I've got several here. The first two I'd like to consider at the same time if there's no objection. One is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the BIL Airport Infrastructure Grant in the amount of $376,744 and the other one is authorizing the acceptance of another grant for Airport Improvement Program or the AIP project totaling $861,278. Both of these will be used by the airport to make necessary repairs to our runway to accommodate what we expect to be additional aviation traffic over the coming couple of years with the new industrial developments that are going on out there as well as some new developments with the local military presence out there. So this is a much-needed grant for the Airport Authority totaling, I think, all in, the state, the city has a 10% match to this, but the state has offered to cover half of that. So all in, this is about $1.3, $1.4 million and the city's responsibility for all of this is going to be around $65,000. So 95% of all of these improvements are being paid for with federal and state grant money and it'll be an awesome improvement to our airport. So if there's no objections, I would like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider the acceptance of these grant funds today under new business.
Second.
Second. All right, clerk. Councilman Smith had a second.
Okay. Those in favor to consider both resolutions today as items of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted for both items.
Move to adopt both item number 2023-588 and 2023-589.
So me?
Oh, what? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
No.
Discussion?
What did you point at me?
She was, I think, pointing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She seconded the motion.
I dazed off there, so.
All right.
But I can explain if you want me to again. Mr. President.
Should we vote first or explain first? Does it matter?
Either way.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're good. Dixon, just making sure I don't mess up.
But I wanted to just to thank Brett Johnson and Heath Williamson. Heath, Brett's with the Mayor's Department, Heath's Engineering, for their work on this. Councilman Wilson explained a lot about the airport earlier and pre-council, but this is money that was done the day that we changed our architectural firm or engineering firm and then we went after these grants. We want to thank our relationship with Senator Brett's office, Congressman Adherhold and Senator Tuberville's office, and the Alabama Department of Transportation. It's a 90% city match, 5% state, 5% local. This will increase our traffic at our runways and then we're going after the cross runway next for grants through Senator Brett's office.
It's outstanding. It's nice to see the, obviously the grants come to Gadsden, but it's also nice to see federal, state, and local government work together to accomplish really important things for Gadsden.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you, Heath and Brett and Mayor Ford. Thank you. All right, clerk, let me take the vote, please.
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
I think there was another one. Yes, Mr. President. The final one is, this is a resolution also from the Legal Department authorizing an agreement between the City of Gadsden and the Etowah County Commission and the Sheriff of Etowah County. This is our jail contract. For those of you who don't know in the audience here, we actually contract with the Etowah County Sheriff's Department who owns the county jail here. The City of Gadsden does not have its own jail, which is true for all the other communities in Etowah County as well. So we've been operating actually on a two-year, I think it was a one-year agreement with an extension and then that extension ran out, so we were basically operating on this month-to-month part of the agreement that we had as these negotiations came together. So the mayor's office and Tina King worked with the Etowah County Commission and the Sheriff's Department to negotiate a new jail contract moving forward. So this will be effective August 1st, I believe, is when this goes into effect. So if there's no objection, I would like to ask that we suspend the rules and approve this new jail contract so that we can have it in place by August 1st.
Second.
Second. Clerk, take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. I'm sorry.
Clerk, take the vote, please.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I believe that's all of our new business for today. Item 15 is department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any of those? Okay. Item 16 is citizen request. Our first is Joseph Cole. He's going to come and speak about Olympic swimming pools and the police and fire departments. Welcome, Mr. Cole.
Mr. President. Mr. Mayor.
Is the green light on, Mr. Cole? I'm sorry. The little button there?
It is.
Okay, good.
I guess I need to speak inside of it.
Thank you.
For quite some time, there should have been discussions about swimming pools and most of that's a discussion that's come from the swimming pool at Colley Homes. And I think the reason is that because at one point in time, there was the only pool in the city that was a public pool that the citizen could go through. And I've heard this number, but I want to make it clear, this is not a racial issue. It is not a white-black issue because we want swimming pools for all of the kids, black, white, brown, or whatever, so it has nothing to do with racial issues. But I have checked the prices of some of the Olympic pools and the prices that I come across gave the price of from $300,000 to $500,000. There has been a million-dollar figure that's been in use, but if it's the case that we could get pools for between $300,000 and $500,000, we possibly could get three. So what I am requesting of the council and the mayor on the next coming budget that you can get together and hopefully next year, we'll have in place getting some pools in the process of building. So that's what I wanted to say about that. So I want us to get racial things out of it when racial things are not there and hopefully we can do this because we don't have any pools here, well, no public pools and it would be good for all of our citizens if that was to take place. The second matter I want to address is the Gadsden Police Department. It have been a number complaints lately from citizens dealing with the police before its brutality and other things. I have been dealing with this police department for years and some, most of the chiefs would not talk to me. There even was a plot at one time by the police to assassinate me. Now, some of you may be disappointed that that didn't go through, but I'm happy that it didn't. But the point of the matter is, is that I have a lot of respect for, before I go there, let me say this. I'm a little off today, been doing a number of things. I want to thank the mayor and the council for the pay increase that you gave the police department. I have been coming up here for years, long before any of you, only the council, to get the council to give the police department a raise. For some reason, they was real squeezy about doing it, but you have opened the door to have good raise now, so all we got to do now is to get the people there in order to get the raise. Now, getting back to what I was saying earlier, I have a whole lot of respect for this chief and Captain Bobby Jackson. Before this chief came on, Bobby Jackson was the only one I could speak to because the previous chief would not. He have always been honest, straightforward, and tell the truth. The same thing I can say about Chief Jackson. I support him. I support the police department, let it be no doubt about it. We may have disagreements, but I do not believe, in my honest opinion, that this chief or any officer will cover up any wrongdoing from anyone in the police department. I know it for a fact because I have brought complaints. They have allowed me to view some of the things that occurred. So all this stuff about the chief there is not true and I want everybody to know where I stand in defense of this police department, this police chief, Bobby Jackson, and all of those other leaders. My last thing is the fire department and once again, the council and the mayor. Things have really been brought up because you have a new truck and you're trying to do more and more for the fire department. We have, unlike the past chiefs, this chief and Chief Carroll have been very good in associating with me to try to get blacks on the force when there was problems. They have worked hard to make sure nothing was done. So, but what I'm asking this council again today, and I know you've got a lot of things coming up in the budget, but I want you to consider a pay raise for these gentlemen. They go through some of the best training out, so we don't want to train up people and then let somebody else get them because they're not getting the amounts that they're supposed to do. So y'all were looking for trouble today, but I'm here to tell you how good everything is in the city. My final thing, Mr. President, before I sit down, I got a call from our oldest citizen granddaughter, the one the mayor gave a citation, not a citation, but proclamation two months ago. There was damage done to their roof and they don't know if it came from the storm that we had recently or otherwise. So they asked me to call. I said, "If I call, you won't get any help." But if you could give me the name of someone in community development or at the EMT who may could go out and check that roof to see and see what could be done as far as if it's an emergency or there's funds in the community development that would be able to help on this. Thank you.
I would direct you to Ms. Ruth Moffett. Ruth, if you'll raise your hand right there.
Okay.
She'll be glad, I'm sure she'll be glad to help you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And y'all can rest easy and have a good day.
All right, next to speak is David Woodard. Is Mr. Woodard here? I don't believe he's able to be here today. Sorry. Then next would be Josh Dodd, Natural Illusions Salon. Mr. Dodd is going to speak on the salon and permanent makeup.
My name is Josh Dodd. We own Kerry Wilson Insurance Agency and Natural Illusions Salon downtown. And in the past few, our salon's been open for, it'll be 10 years in October. And over the past few weeks, we've, we have something called Salon Suites, so if you come into our salon from Broad Street side, you don't realize that there is 15 different salon inside. There are different cosmetologists, estheticians, barbers, and stuff like that inside that building. One of the new tenants has come in and they are a licensed cosmetologist, but they also do permanent makeup. That we've had one before, it was never anything done with it. Recently, we realized that there is a variance in zoning against tattoos. Well, the State Board of Cosmetology doesn't regulate the permanent makeup. The Alabama Department of Public Health does. So I'm here today to ask for an exception to that rule so that we can do permanent makeup inside the salon. Now, I didn't find out until yesterday that I'm supposed to go to the Board of Adjustments first and then come here, so I feel bad for less than your five minutes of time, but when I was on there, I decided I'd go ahead and come to it. Just to kind of give you a heads up on permanent makeup, it's not just for cosmetics. They do have a lot of added benefits to it as far as like if somebody has breast cancer and stuff like that, they shade in areolas, they do eyeliners, they do eyebrows. If somebody has like, they get burned and stuff like that. So there's a lot of good things that come out of this permanent makeup. So basically, I'm just requesting an exception to the zoning downtown. We've been in business for 10 years. We've never had any issues in the salon. Prior to this, we had somebody that did microblading and stuff and the Department of Public Health has approved everything, but because of some wording and stuff like that, even the business license had been approved here, but they didn't realize that this all didn't fall under the salon thing that there was added inspection and added requirements for that. So I've spoken with our city councilman, Mr. Back, and that's where I ended up here. So I'm just asking if you guys would consider that whenever we go to the Board of Adjustments and it comes back forward, if you guys would look into it, if you guys have any questions that you need to ask us about the permanent makeup or anything like that, then we'll be more than happy to answer any of those or anything.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here today. Thank you. All right, that takes us to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Ford has had to step out to speak with Congressman Adherhold, so we will start with Councilman Robinson. Would you mind to lead us off?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Just, I'll do my regular, this was a very good day of local government. Sales are up and winds blowing. City of Gadsden's moving forward. Looking forward to what's going to happen in the next few years and everybody just hang tight with us and we're going to make this thing happen. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra.
Yes, we had a Public Works Committee meeting this morning and we are working to make improvements with the relationship that we have with our landlords. There is an ordinance that says that when the tenant is either moving out or there's an eviction, that the cleanup is necessary before you can rent to another. And oftentimes, those cleanouts are a large dumping of trash on the streets and on that property. There is a fine for that and it's $1,000. And we want to make sure that our landlords understand the requirements and again, wanting to keep our city clean. So just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have too much, but I will just make my comments known about the elephant in the room over the last couple of days with the soccer program. I'm in favor of, I think it's a mistake for anybody to think that this council or the mayor's office is not in full support of the youth soccer program in Etowah County, but here's my two cents on it. You know, the challenge we have, our role as council members here is to be fiscal agents for the city, to oversee the budget and the taxpayers' money. And the fact is, unlike a lot of these other communities that you hear talked about a lot in the conversation, Albertville and Coleman and this other stuff, the City of Gadsden built the Gadsden Sports Complex with zero debt. We paid 100% of taxpayer dollars out of the budget to build that program in multiple different stages over the last several years. So the cost that we incur to run and manage that thing is not insignificant. As you saw today, we're constantly doing things to try to cut those costs over there by asking for permission to water and irrigate the fields with water from the river instead of having to use fresh water from the Water Works Board. So these are all efforts to drive down the costs over there. And as many of you know that are involved in the soccer program in Etowah County, it does continue to grow. And it's not just Gadsden youth that are playing on those soccer fields. These are, you know, children from all over Etowah County. And so we're spending Gadsden taxpayer dollars to maintain a facility that children all over this county and from outside this county even utilize. So that's one of the challenges we have. So what happened is, there's been a negotiation going on for the last several months about what the rental rate should be for these organizations that run the county soccer programs. And that culminated last night in a comment about the cancellation of some of the programs as a result of what the city is charging for the rental of those fields. There's a lot of different ways to get to the finish line, guys, and I have full confidence that the mayor's office will continue to work with the organizations involved to get an amicable agreement put in place. Of course, this city, I don't think anybody up here, I won't speak for the rest of this body, but I can say with a pretty high level of confidence that I don't think anybody up here is interested in causing any damage to any youth athletics program in, not only in Gadsden, but the entire county. So I just ask that you guys realize, I've gotten a ton of comments about this and I'll just end with this. So many of the comments that I've gotten have started with, "This just doesn't make any sense. This doesn't make sense." And the only thing I'll leave you with is, if you read something and it doesn't make sense to you, it's probably because you're missing some of the information necessary. It's not because we're all crazy. It's because one part of a story was told and the other part of the story hasn't been told, so the part that you've read just doesn't make sense. So please trust that there are a lot of people up here. I can point to a couple of people just in this immediate vicinity who have children that participate in this youth soccer program right now. So I promise you, there are a lot of concerned parties at the table and a lot of people that support the Etowah Youth Soccer Program, who support the Rush Soccer Program, and the parents that run those organizations, and there will be an amicable resolution to this thing. I think unfortunately, just to give you my two cents worth, I think that the deal was pretty much almost done and there was just one little thing at the end that kind of took it off the rails. So I'm just telling you, if you look at something online and it doesn't make sense, So I'm just telling you, if you look at something online and it doesn't make sense, please understand it's probably because you don't have all the information that you need. So please bear with us, and I can assure you that this will all be resolved and that children will continue to play soccer in Etowah County.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say, first of all, thank you to all the first responders. We appreciate you, all the department heads, we appreciate you. Just a quick response in our city, getting everything cleaned up. Know we still got a lot of work to do, but just a great response. Want to tell you thank you for that. Thank you to this council. It's great working with everybody up here. We're still moving, we're still learning, we're still growing, but a lot of great things are happening in the City of Gadsden, and I'm excited about that. You can ride around town and see that visually. So thank you, Mayor Ford, to your staff and yourself for all that you are doing. Mr. Dodd, thank you for sharing that. Since you were the spokesperson, do y'all serve men and women? Is that just for women? Okay. All right, I may be calling you, praise God. And also to Mr. Cole, listen, since we bought the YMCA, there's been conversations about a pool, so I'm confident that we will have a pool in the City of Gadsden. We want to be good stewards with doing that, of course, and so it's just not wisdom to spend a lot of money, and existing pool is going to take a lot of work. So I think when that happens, it'll be in a good centralized location, it'll be a good pool that everybody will have access to. So just want to let you know that we do hear the concerns, that was the letter sent to the council. I did read that entire letter, and the thing that we're addressed, we realize it's not only children that benefit, but all seniors who benefit from that, as well as lifeguards who need certification. Just know that this council, this mayor and staff, we are hearing the concerns and we are addressing those. So thank you so much. Thank you. One other thing, the situation that happened in Birmingham. Let me speak to the elephant in the room. We took a tour, some of us with Chief Jaggers, to police station not long ago and did a tour. All of the talk that was going on about that, once they put the video up, a lot of that was silence. So just be mindful in our city that we are also starting to put cameras up all over the city, and we will be constantly probably adding more cameras to that system. So just want everybody to be mindful, be mindful. Once the camera video went out, all of the talk all of a sudden stopped. That was a genius move by the Hoover Police Department to just say, "Hey, let's put the video out," and all this will stop. So just know that we're doing that to make our city safer and to cut down on some of the things that would normally go on inside the city. So thank you again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Latham.
I have no remarks.
You have no remarks today?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Ford. So I'm sorry to excuse myself, I was on the phone with our congressman about reapportionment. There's a lot of movement going on down there. I'll update. Something just voted out of the Senate. Etowah County is getting split, 20% in the Senate bill, 20% would stay in Congressman Adirhol's area, would be Sand Mountain, 80% would be split in Congressman Rogers' district. Nothing against Congressman Rogers. We, he's a friend of mine, would be supportive, but that'd be a disaster for Etowah County, for them to split us in half. The ones that get split get nothing. So Congressman Adirhol assured me he's going to do what he can do to help keep us intact as whole, as a community of interest. So we're working the phones right now. So first thing, Westbound Lane on Broad Street Bridge will be closed Monday, June, the 24th through Wednesday, the 26th, from 9:00 to 5:00 evening for ATT to do their work. One of my pledges was to improve our recruitment and retention and efforts in police and fire. Today, with the president back, we've sworn in two new police officers. I thought that was fabulous. Both police officers were from Marshall County, where they reside, will be working with us. To discuss one thing, we did sell another building at the East Air Depot. So it's another building that's been sitting vacant in our land for a while with nothing going on. We sold it to Dairyman Supply for $400,000. So here's a check for $400,000, which goes in our real estate fund, so we're very excited about that. Thanks to Lee Roberts, our city attorney, helping close the deal. The last thing is the soccer dilemma. People, I received a lot of phone calls from friends last night and people concerned outside of the City of Gadsden. I hope people know me better. We're not going, we're going to put the kids first. We're going to take care of the children, we're going to make sure they have a place to play, but we're also going to make it fair across the board for everyone. So we play by the same rules, not just for someone special, a director, but we are going to take care of the kids. I want to let you know this, we've already been in communication with the board of directors, at least three of them, three or four times in meetings, and we have a plan prepared to present to the board. This Facebook post, I hadn't seen it, came out of nowhere, and it just stirred a lot of people up. So I hate that for the people, for the children, for the grandparents. You know, we have a beautiful soccer complex. We're still figuring out how to run it, how to make it feasible for the community, but, you know, just remember this, the kids are going to come first, and we're going to take care of them, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ford. I want to echo the good news of hiring two new police officers today. That was an honor to be a part of that conversation and of actual swearing in the officers and their family here in the council chamber. So very proud of those two young men and look forward to seeing them become Gadsden police officers. So thank you to them and their families. Not to overlook, but $1.3 million for our airport, vitally important to our community and the surrounding area. So it's a great thing to have that much federal money coming in to Gadsden and the state chipping in without even being really asked to do so. So that's, Gadsden is all the buzz. If you're, if you're out in certain circles, you'll, you'll know that Gadsden is all the buzz, and it's a lot to do with our leadership coming out of the mayor's office and the mayor's staff of how they're going about conducting business. A lot of people are looking at Gadsden. There's a lot of investment that is poised to come to Gadsden. And it's, I've said before up here, I don't want to say it every Tuesday, because then it becomes where you don't really hear it, but you're not going to recognize Gadsden in four years. There's going to be a lot of things change, very positive change, and a lot of investment dollars come into our community that is going to be very exciting. So this is a great time to be in Gadsden. Along those same lines, we just sold the Seer, well, I think we all call the Seer's Building on Broad Street. It's actually 731 or 741 Forest Avenue, but there's going to be an investment there to put apartments. And so that's going to change the whole look of that area. You know, we're so used to driving up that hill going toward the courthouse, and there's an old dilapidated building there that we all have memories about from years gone by, but it's been empty for, oh, I don't know how many decades. So it's about to not be empty. It's going to be a whole new life will be refreshed there. So that's, that's going to be an exciting time, and we thank the Highlands LLC Group for making that investment. And just to echo Councilman Wilson and Mayor Ford, my phone was, a lot of texts, a lot of calls last night and this morning, and I agree with the mayor and I agree with Councilman Wilson, we're going to take care of the children. You know, I have a five-year-old granddaughter that plays soccer. I was at that field in two different seasons this, this last year, very proud to be a part of that. You know, that started as a $12 million sports complex, it's now grown into a $20 million sports complex. So we don't make that kind of investment on the, on the fly, and we also study it and do the best we can to be good stewards of your tax dollars, and that's what, that's what we're going to do. And so bear with us as we do this. We haven't done this before. This is the first time anybody up here, including the mayor, has operated a sports complex. The mayor was involved with the mega sports complex in Rainbow City, but that was just in the beginning stages. We've, we've never operated a complex of this nature, so we're going to get it right, and we're going to take care of the children, and I think everybody will be happy. Lot of activity over there. We have baseball, we have soccer, we have softball. Gadsden State is introducing their baseball team again and softball team, that's going to be located there. The Champions Field, for special needs children, is currently under construction. That's going to, it'll have a baseball diamond, but it'll also have in the outfield what you could call a soccer field, so there's going to be opportunities to play various different sports in, at that facility, and also pickleball courts. You know, we talk about all the other sports, but pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America, and we're going to have, I've lost count of the number of courts over there, but a lot. So we're going to have a lot of activity over there, and I think we're all going to be very proud once all the construction's done. Heath Williamson has put in tons of work over there with the design, along with some other engineering firms outside that, that we've hired, and so just, everybody kind of stay calm, we're going to get through this, and we'll have the right agreement in place with the soccer association. And with that, I will, I'm sorry, I forgot, Councilman Avery is out of town, and he has asked Ivan Nelson, our city clerk, to make two announcements for District 3. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first one is the monthly district meeting for District 3 has been postponed. It will not take place on the third Tuesday as normal, and the date and time is still to be announced for the replacement meeting. The other announcement is for this coming Sunday, July the 23rd. It's a cleanup event for the District 3 community, and the meeting place is Valley Street. And the time will, it will begin at 3:00, and will go through 5:00. So that's this coming Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00, and meet at Valley Street.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your kind attention today. Thanks for being here. We are adjourned.